AI. We do it right. Yeah, like, and this. But we didn't. I was also like the kind of recipe. But now that's the time to progress. We've already done.
Oh, great.
Yes. Now, it's one of us. That's true.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations.
What's first? Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, I'm thinking like emotions. Jay pointed out, I see a couple of issues too, right? Like emotions that were responding to documents. We're all. Still around soon. So many issues. What can anything? That's what is for. That makes sense. Um, and then one, yeah, there is less about. That's true. Since they're attached to each other. Is the intent of the chief representative given that it comes with a good egg? And we should be able to. You can't. And we have. It works. It's all good. All one.
I know. I know. Anna. The call to meeting of the soccer town. Zombies are working the deal. July 11th, 2021. I would ask, as we're being recorded today, would you please state your name when you're stating anything at all? So at least as quickly as you can, so that more than anyone can get written on the phone. That's true. Princess. Here, her here. Webster here. Okay. Stuart here. All of them. If you have everything back. No, this. No, um. And asking if we wish to approve and a motion to approve with Janet. If someone please motion, so some move. Webster move. Okay, second. There's second, all in favor, so. Any votes? Um, the third issue is the approval of the thirty minutes from our Friday meeting on June 27th, 2024. And I believe, um, the question had something to say about that. I think there's some things that are, uh, Webster. Um, there's things that are missing, and I don't believe that this reflection of what actually occurred uh, on that date, so I would request that we wait for the, um, the transcripts, the official transcripts, and then and then see whether there's an comparison. So I, I would wouldn't that we would hold off on improvement. The motion is that the minutes be held in abeyance. Is there a second?
Second.
Later time, all in favor? Uh. Vote. Motion carries. Public comment.
Good afternoon. I'm Bobby Lot, people on mainstream soccer. As board chair of the Coastal Alliance, um, we are here on behalf of our members to secure standing in order to challenge the township's 2017 approval of a special land use marina permit to offshore Sagata. Mr. Gabriel Ellis, which was such a name, is fond of using political slides illustrating basements houses and using words to imply when you're here to dispute North Shore's rent to build houses. We are not. The Coastal Alliance has challenged North Shore's proposed marina for two reasons. One violates township zoning ordinance, which states that no canal or channel may be excavated for the purpose of increasing waterfrontage. And two, it violates the township standards for special land use section fifteen point four zero that expressly prohibit uses that cause environmental degradation to sensitive natural resources or degrade the essential character of the area. In 2017 and 2018, the township ZVA decided that alliance members lack standing because they were not considered to be egregious parties. That decision began as began a series of appeals culminated in a Michigan Supreme Court decision in July of 2022 that fundamentally changed the criteria for being a party. The Supreme Court wrote, and I quote, "A specific change where exception to local zoning restrictions might burden certain properties or individual rights more heavily than others. Party who can present some evidence of such disproportionate burdens likely will have standing to appeal," end quote. The court provided an example in their ruling, and again, I quote, "The Lakefront Property Owners Association was aggrieved by a special land use approval when the association alleged that the additional docks may disrupt or destroy the shoreline and its ecosystem." Because as riparian owners who share the shoreline, the members have an interest beyond that of other lake users, the public at large, or even similarly situated neighbors," end quote. This is now Michigan law.
One minute.
And while Mr. Gabriel Ellis might try to persuade you that the new criteria tweaks were minor changes, neither is true. Last December, Superior Court Judge Anne Kobyak rebuked Mr. Gabriel Ellis for that characterization, saying that, and I quote, "It is important for the court to recognize that in reviewing this opinion, this was a significant change in law," end quote. Our coastal alliance team has provided material evidence, some of which for good reason did not exist in 2018. All of the evidence shows that the Wallace Beely and Dean families are disproportionately burdened by the special land use marina, thus meeting the test for standing. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Ives Potter. I live in Kalamazoo. I give my address. It's 1204 Banner Street. Um, I am for native for Kalamazoo River members, and we work to protect the Kalamazoo River after the 2010 oil. Anything that happens further in the river, which it adds is a degradation to it, and it will never, ever change. I'm here actually, though, to talk about the stand. There are two pieces of evidence that I still don't know if have been put in your record yet for decision, and those are from Eagle and from the Army Corps of Engineer. So I'm unsure of that yet. But those pieces of evidence are clear. Clear. And those should be in there if they are not. It would be great to know if they are, yet. What Eagle said was, "The proposed project will have significant adverse effects on the natural resources associated with the Kalamazoo River, the uses of the Kalamazoo River, and the public trust." I'm here as a member of the public at large, which was referred to last week. I'm also a deep, deep lover of the river and the shoreline and the lake. I have been coming here for years. I've also followed this process, and I know that this decision is a year to for us to have standing, the public. We trust you, with the public, public trust, to make a decision for sheer standing to allow the voices to be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Chair of the ZBA and others. My name is Dale Harrison. I'm recording my own eight six six stream. Happy to be here. I've got some information to help you understand and more closely what I've been trying to do, what is the justice, with Supreme Court judge. This is an extraordinary, completely whitewashed, but the entire system's ZBA laws throughout Michigan. And it's not just me saying. So what I tried to do is, well, who's saying this? What are they doing? So I zeroed in on the, the two dissenting judges for the Supreme Court. And that's what this handout is all. They were very clear, and they'd be even concerned that this is going to trouble all over the county line. But if anybody picks this tree, it's agreed, everybody have stand. That's pretty close. Rather than taking my word for it, I want to just review these two. Page fourteen of their dissent. I highlighted, first, majority of the way with the reform, harm suffered must be different from the harm suffered by those who are similarly situated. This is a significant change. There's a bunch, by changing the relative comparison to others in the local community instead of those who are similarly situated. The majority standard, this is their, majority standard significantly broadened, who can qualify as agreed. Significantly broadened, which quote, who could be. The alliance's example. Goals and objectives of protecting the environment.
One minute.
Thank you. Clearly, that, that itself is enough. Third back, which is really my board, briefly board, expands one degree, especially damages are different in kind, of more significant degree. Some people don't care about environmental issues, alliance stuff. And the effects in other than local community. And the judge seems to have enjoyed his words, that will be almost, will almost always be possible, must always be possible, to find others in the local community who have not suffered the kind of damages, they have to sever them to a lesser degree. This is really a picture. I just sort of stumbled onto this last night when I was in a position. But this is really what he's talking about. The other thing I'd like to just mention briefly, I'm hoping that you blow it off in the record, do the documents. Eagle document, quote, in years, in motion class, and move forward, discussion up ahead. Just, I'm pretty excited about this, because I didn't even discover this until this night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The others? Motion to post public comment. Uh, Webster, so. What's your motion to post public comment? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Public comment is, now we have a new business. I have no business, anybody here? I think it is. The brain business. Right, and let's continue on with unfinished business. Under unfinished business, this means meeting is the purpose for deliberating decisions in relation of proposed motions. Um, reading from here, decisions in consideration for post-motion deliberations of many decisions pursuant to order. What that means is that our last meeting, we accepted, I would put it on, we'll do it in a moment, but just so we all understand, we, we discussed that we are accepting all documents for consideration prior to April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Then it was brought up, how many documents submitted after that date should we consider if any? So that put these motions into us. And I'd like to go through these motions, one at a time, so that we're all on board. The first motion, and I'm assuming that I have to, uh, read the entire, uh, open, is that correct? Right, I definitely, I have to read the entire motion.
I think you should read the entire motion. Problem is that, sure, that gets on the record, and so do it as clearly and distinctly as you can.
Um, this motion, this motion says that we accept all materials prior to April twenty, it says April twenty seven, twenty twenty three for consideration. That's what this motion, as wordy as it's going to be, says, and that's what we need to vote on. So, for the record, in an order dated April twenty seven, twenty twenty three, Judge Robert Cengis of the Alligan County Circuit Court found that there was additional material evidence that with good, with good reason was not presented by April ninth, twenty eighteen. The court thus remanded this matter to the ZBA with determinations consistent with the provisions of MCL one two five point three six oh five and one two five point three six oh six. In an order on motion for clarification dated January eleventh, twenty twenty four, Judge Matthew Anne Kobyak stated that the zoning board of appeals shall be committed to consider as additional material evidence pursuant to MCL one two five point three six oh five and one two five point three six oh six such documents submitted by the parties as of April twenty seven, twenty twenty three for purposes of determining whether plaintiff Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance is a party agreed pursuant to Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance versus Sagittuck Township, five oh nine Michigan, five six one, twenty twenty two. The order further provides that affirmation additional material evidence is defined as documents including those offered by North Shores, which plaintiff Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance sought to strike, as well as additional reports authored regarding the impact of the project on the Dune area and on members of the Coastal Alliance issued following the ZBA's decision and submitted by attorney Scott Howard, all of which will refer in reference by Judge Cengis at the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three here. Pursuant to the order, it, it is moved by whoever will move this and seconded by whoever was second that the court, in consideration by the ZBA in deciding whether Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing to appeal this decision because the evidence is not material to standing, and there is no good reason for evidence that was not presented previously. This motion is, do we accept all the information that was invented to us as of April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three for consideration?
So just to clarify, specifically, you're referring to the, the documents that were mentioned in the order.
Yes.
That consisted specifically with reference to the briefing on ready-made motion strike referenced by Judge Kobyak.
Correct, and that was that part of the motion, that that's what we're, yes, of the record, that's not that. Are there any questions or anything on the motion? Do I have a motion to accept or to reject?
So move. You choose to accept.
Motion from Stewart's to accept the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Felker. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? The motion is passed unanimously. The second motion is is to accept or reject all documents submitted by Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance and North Shores after April twenty fourth. We're all on board, am I?
Several twenty four, twenty twenty three.
Correct, twenty twenty, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. We understand that motion. I need to figure out, okay. The order on motion for clarification dated January eleventh, twenty twenty four provides that materials submitted by any party to the Sagittuck Township Zoning Board of Appeals after April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three may be considered only as permitted by MCL one twenty five point three six oh five and one twenty five point three six oh six and may be given whatever weight the zoning board of appeals considers appropriate in making their determination regarding whether Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing pursuant to Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance use Sagittuck Township, five oh nine Michigan, five six one, twenty twenty two. Pursuant to that order, it will be moved by and seconded by that Coastal Alliance and North Shores of Sagittuck documents after twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three for use in consideration and all documents will be permitted or they will not be permitted. Keyword here is all documents submitted after April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three will be considered.
To be clear, it's a, it's a proposed motion to keep the, to opt for subsequent version of the materials.
Well, I understand, this, this isn't all or none, correct. That's what was his option. All right. You can go with all straight lines. Um, I would move that we reject all documents submitted by Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance and North Shores of Sagittuck LLC after April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three for use in consideration by the ZBA citing whether the Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing to appeal the decisions of the Sagittuck Township Planning Commission because the evidence is not material to standing and it's not a good reason why the evidence was not present in, uh, presented previously.
Great discussion on this.
Yes. Correct.
In our previous meeting, uh, we discussed this, and we were asked to. There needs, it needs to be a second before we discuss, zero second.
Time to motion. I second the motion.
Okay. So we decided to, each of us would search through this evidence and submit individual pieces of thought to be able to see. These suggested, well, I suggested, one of them. The reason I submitted the, the evidence that I did was a complete astray of discussions and arguments about the operation and construction of the river, uh, for both parties. Um, and I believe that is a fundamental subject that affects this material and that affects our judgment to stand. Um, I think making that judgment on this issue without those documents is more difficult, it's possible. And I think we should allow those, those four documents.
I agree. I think that what we had talked about agreeing on, what we would consider documents up until April ninth of twenty twenty four, till a date in April of twenty twenty four, whether or not they would be pertinent to this situation, and that we then had an opportunity, each of us, to select a particular document, so we thought with good reasons should be considered, and you brought some forward. So I think we should, uh, reject this motion in time floor and proceed with, uh, listening to or considering the documents presented prior to be for consideration to complete this through April of twenty twenty four.
We need the discussion. So I may ask first for acceptance of this motion. If you're in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye. I'm rejecting object, I'm rejecting.
Yes, because she made.
No, I'm in. Thanks for my motion to reject.
Reject.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, so you are in favor of rejecting, all in favor of rejecting this motion.
The motion is to reject, so the question is.
Are you in favor?
Are you in favor of my motion?
Yes.
And I'm in favor of my.
I'm.
I completely misunderstood you.
I'm in favor of rejecting.
Of, of this document.
There's been a motion made.
Option B. What's your agenda?
Back to motion, please.
To reject all documents submitted by the Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance and North Shores of Sagittuck LLC after April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three for use in the consideration of this ZBA deciding whether Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing to appeal the decisions of the Sagittuck Township Planning Commission because the evidence is not material to standing and, uh, there was no good reason why the evidence was not presented previously.
Thank you.
And then I stated that it was material uh, because of the, the chain of evidence that had gone through. There is good.
All in favor of the motion to reject this motion as presented? We are rejecting that no other documents will be accepted.
So that's, I, I think it's easier if we say all, all in favor of.
Of my motion.
Sure.
To reject and to post April twenty fourth.
I guess, after April twenty fourth, twenty three, we're not considering any of those documents.
So if, if you vote in favor, you're voting to reject.
Those documents. How I feel.
There's, there's, out of the documents that were submitted by Denise and by Patrick, there were five additional documents. This is, this motion is, I've given understanding, would reject the consideration of those five documents. But I, I don't, I don't know what you want to do with that, but that's what that is. Now, we do have a bit of confusion with the five documents in that two of them, from our assessment, were already in the materials that were considered by Judge Cengis. So there's five documents and three documents, but in any event, you would be not considering these documents if you what we've got on the table here.
All in favor?
Aye.
You heard that what we're voting on?
All in favor?
Of rejecting this?
I'm confused. It seems to me, and so if we, if we vote for this motion, that we are not allowed the discussion of the five documents submitted. Unless somebody can bring that up to me, I'm not going to vote for it. I really need to consider the additional documents until April of the twenty fourth, at which we have discussed previously, in which we decided to select the documents, some of us did, some of us did not choose particular documents to be discussed. I believe those documents should be discussed. And I think if we vote for this motion as stated, we are not permitting ourselves to do that.
Can you, maybe, ask your dad, my dates, if the dates on this document, so you can look that up.
One is like two hundred and fifteen, twenty twenty two, so that's already in.
I think it's already.
Joe, November twenty five, two thousand nineteen is already in. So that's not what we're saying, so that's one of the five. Uh, August twenty, twenty three.
I agree, this is a very confusing motion.
It is.
I, that is one.
You have the motion, we have the second, you have the study.
Regardless of whether or not they're in or out, it's irrelevant to this, to the situation. The important point, I feel, is that we give consideration to the documents presented to us until April of twenty fourth, whether or not we reject or accept that they're in or they're out. My opinion is they're out. We agree or don't agree that we would consider and decide if there was good reason or not to have individual documents brought forward and decide if there were. Now, just because those documents are already in is irrelevant to the fact that we should just have it on the record that we're going to consider those documents.
I, I'm sensing a, sensing, sensing, rather redundant, that we all agree with what you're saying, Rex. I just don't know how to deal with this particular motion. sensing, rather redundant that we all agree with what you're saying, Rex. I just don't know how to deal with this particular motion.
So, so the motion is essentially, we have the post April twenty four, twenty twenty three documents that have been submitted by both parties. Webster has made a motion to flatly reject all of those documents. So I would say let's just do a, see what the vote is, all in favor of that motion to flatly reject all of the post April twenty four, twenty twenty three documents. If that motion fails, then perhaps he sounds like member Felker thinks we should go individually through whatever those the three documents that were made, go through those individually. That's another option. So that's how I think.
I can state that motion again.
You know, no. Right. Right. So your question will have to be, all who's in the favor of the motion as stated to reject.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion to reject that all documents submitted or used in consideration. After, somebody else. April twenty four.
After April twenty four, twenty twenty three.
Are we in favor of this motion? All in favor of Denise's motion as presented.
Aye.
Aye.
Karen Webster.
Post.
All post.
Post.
Yeah. The.
That's three to two. I, I want to get down to number three. Are you in higher?
You're higher, yeah.
I want to get whatever will get me to motion C.
Okay, then you have to reject and you have to say aye.
Aye. All right. Three, the two, aye. Okay. Motion is three ayes, two ahs.
Correct.
All right. Motion C. On this motion, this will be pinched, I'm curious submitted by any firm. To the Sagatuck Township Zoning Board of Appeals after April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three may be considered only as permitted by MCL one twenty five point three six oh five and one twenty five six oh six and may be given whatever weight the zoning board appeals considers appropriate in his determination regarding whether the SDCA has standing pursuant to Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance versus Sagatuck Township, five oh nine Michigan five six one twenty twenty two. On May thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the board discussed whether to accept or reject post April twenty four, twenty twenty three documents submitted by the parties. ZBA members Webster and Stewart proposed the valid documents for consideration. The Kendall report dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty three, the NSS council response dated April twenty ninth, twenty twenty three to Eagle correspondence dated August tenth, twenty twenty three and Beha MSU plant biology letter dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Again, I'd like to reiterate that Wallace affidavit was automatically included and the other November submission, which was the other November submission, which was the very core of Indian years, November thirteen, twenty twenty two is included already. So that's why we're dealing with three documents, not five.
Yes, and I'd like to note that the Kendall report was dated March twentieth, twenty twenty three.
So noted, but yeah, it was, my understanding is that it was included in a packet that was not accepted by the court until after the April twenty third date of twenty four, twenty twenty three. And that's why it's to be considered separately.
Just to, just to clarify that point. Counsel, I've reviewed the documents that were submitted by parties to Judge Canis prior to the April twenty four, twenty twenty three hearing. Our review did not show that the Kendall report dated March twenty 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 three was included in those materials. Maybe the parties think that it was. I, we could not find it, but it's that was our assessment as your counsel. We don't know how else to deal with that situation other than call it out and say, all right, even if it was included, you're going to give it, you're going to consider it anyway or whatever you decide to do with this motion. That's up to you guys. But that's how it's included for sure with this motion. It's included for sure with this motion. I don't care. Yep.
Correct.
It'd be a no harm, no foul if you considered it twice. So what? I mean, it's.
So, so the two documents, the only one that for sure was included is a Wallace.
Yes, that we understand.
Right.
Two documents.
Yeah.
He said, he's not sure of the Kendall.
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, we.
November. True.
And if we made an error if we made an error in thinking that in fact, if the Kendall report dated March twenty was in the material that Judge Canis considered, it would be be non-issue because you're considering it one way.
So the motion that I clearly understood is other than these three itemized documents that we reject any other post April twenty four, twenty twenty three documents that are not hereby expressed in the foregoing list of the document. That we are not going to consider any other post April twenty four, twenty twenty three documents other than these three. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I will move so.
Felker, motion to accept. Francis will second the motion. All in favor.
Aye.
opposed? No.
Aye. Aye.
And um. Maybe we could.
Robot.
Oh, we're into robots. And Secretary. Felker.
Aye.
Francis.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Kirk and Webster.
No.
What was the motion about? All right. All right, so do we have this, I think maybe now we'll just open some discussion in front of whether or not we've been presented by two of our members, but whether or not we believe that they should consider at this time. So Patrick, you've submitted two of these. Would you like to share with us why you believe they should be considered in the next one?
One, that was a question of whether the lagoon was engineered properly for construction and operation and how that affects the rights of the state, of people of the community. By the et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's a fundamental issue here that goes to the issue standard. And these documents complete that chain. I think it's arbitrary to say that uh, okay, we got this string of arguments and uh, these documents that, that came in after that, the date of twenty twenty three, even though they're material. And I believe they have a good process to do this. I think it's arbitrary to say, well, we're not going to consider. And we've all read them two or three times. And you can't unread them. You can't unconsider them. So I think it's, it's not only arbitrary to do it, but it makes this thing difficult because it's just, it's just very difficult to not look at the whole thing. I, I would submit that if we accept them in evidence, doesn't mean what our judgment is, doesn't mean that we can't, when we determine status, uh, ignore them or look at them. It just simply means they're there. If we need them to make that judgment of standing based on the construction and the operation of our lagoon, which I think is pivotal.
I agree. Consideration is consideration. It's not except.
Not except.
It's consideration. And I think that we should consider the documents presented under reason. I think that we should. Consider this typical sign for their own, they are, they do have a reason that we might find.
You're referring, Rex, to the three documents that are identified.
Yes.
Okay, correct.
My only hesitation is why, why just these three documents? We, we have opposing positions presented on, on everything. Why are we saying these are the ones we should consider when the opposing party or when their documents aren't presented to contradict or to offer evidence to the contrary? That's my hesitation.
Well, I think in the first place, I think all of this evidence comes under the category of none of it requires us to agree with it or disagree. It's just available to us. I would have referred, we accept it all and is if we want, no, is we do. That's the clear instruction on the circuit card. Uh, we were told at our discretion to include it or not include it. They didn't talk about what we're supposed to do with it or how important it is or you know, would we agree with it or not? So that's a fundamental thing. But these documents, I think, stand above the general discussion because they involve the critical issue of the construction, the engineering and the operation of which is really what we're talking about. We're talking about its effect on the, on the dunes. We're talking about its effect on wildlife. We're talking about its effect on the community. And I think it's, I think it's pivotal.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree in disagreeing because I think it should be, these documents should be considered because we need to consider them. And then we decided that we would select from particular documents if somebody had a special reason why they thought they should be selected out of the group and not just out within that. And that's happened and that's where we are right now.
So what you're saying is we are.
As far as, you know, I disagree with a little bit about whether we're here to discuss construction of a lagoon or any other such properties of any of it. We're only here to determine whether or not these parties have standing for itself, not anything to do with what the stuff. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Well, we said about whether or not they have a right to contest it.
I, I agree. And I'd like to clarify. I don't have, I'm not stating that I have a position on the, is there a documents here for North Shores, a document here from Coastal Alliance? I'm at no means saying, gee, I think this, I'm just saying it's important.
I still think that any can be submitted after April twenty fourth. Allowed at all. I've read through all the ones that these two presented and I just feel like if we look at those five documents, had a little bit others and we're not in that position because we've already considered aside.
I can tell you the reason why I submitted those documents is one, and not knowing that they were already, there were several that were already submitted. So therefore, those all of the documents, there's only really one document that I submitted that was not, and that was the North Shore. And since I'm, I am a firm believer that we look at, that we are going to look at materials as ordered by Judge Canis in regards to that April twenty four, twenty twenty three, then that document would not be included because it was after that date. And, and it says, yes, we made, but I'm saying no, we're not looking at any other documents. Only the shell as ordered and anything after that date by any of us not to be considered. So that, that document, one document that I have suggested, it was just a suggestion that I would not submit.
So are you wishing to withdraw all the documents that you presented from consideration?
Uh, yes, I would. If, if that's really what has to take place, then I would then say, yes, I would withdraw. I would, I would not. Because I would not have put that forward. If I knew, understood the order, which I do now, um, is I would not put that, I would not have put that document forward.
I think somewhere along, I made a motion to accept those documents. So.
I think it is accepting of the consideration.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now, considering.
Well, yeah, so I think there's options available to either, again, kind of like with, with the prior motion, you can accept the three wholesale or reject wholesale or go back. I think those are the appropriate options. So a member feels strongly viewing the documents as a whole group. Think most of the one we've never, never regarded or.
We've already decided this group to consider no more than the five documents that were selected by me. So we're not going to add any ones at this point. So we hold. Patrick, neither is.
I would move that we accept three documents.
In, in partial. The partial is three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No. Felker.
Aye.
Francis.
No.
Stewart.
Aye.
Kirk.
No.
Webster.
No.
So you need a new motion to accept? Well, I already, I don't say materials don't. I'll go back to motion A. To reject materials submitted after April April the twenty one, twenty twenty seven.
That's what we're doing.
Well.
It's true.
So we reject.
There is a, regarding that motion C, which was to accept these. So I understand correctly, there was a motion to accept the three. And the three are still at issue then. There is not going to be a motion.
So the motion would now have to be to reject three documents as identified. The Kendall report dated March twentieth, twenty twenty three, the North Shores council response dated August twenty ninth, twenty twenty three to Eagle correspondence dated August tenth, twenty twenty three and the Beha MSU plant biology letter dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty three to reject.
Second to motion.
Second.
Just, it's a clarification. Our impression, counsel's impression is that we may have voted just exactly to the contrary earlier. And this concerns us so that we get clarification. Uh, the earlier motion the earlier motion seemed to suggest to us, counsel, that you were approving consideration of the three documents that are identified in. That are identified in motion C.
Consider, and so we had the discussion of considering, so now the motion is to reject.
We consider.
We consider, and now we're rejecting.
If you accept. Our.
Rejecting the access because we've already had that motion to the uh. Now we're saying, no, we we had the discussion of consideration, we're not accepting those documents.
Okay, Chair. Um.
I think a motion.
You can't review a motion you've already agreed to that's based on counsel's suggestion. But no, 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 if you already agreed to.
He's on the board, he's.
Out of work, we're going back to this motion here. I I just want, we have discussion, we have a motion and a second, correct? I just want to reiterate, we are not dealing with substance of any of this information. As much as we learn, we are not talking about substance, we're talking about standing. That's the key. So the motion that we have is. We we had a motion to consider, now we have a motion we've considered, and we do not want to. Our consideration of that. Am I stating that correctly?
That's right, that the documents are not materials of standing and had no good reason why they were presented previously.
And should the extent that that decision may amend what earlier you decided, this decision rules.
Yes, yes.
Would that be considered?
Yes.
An approach that you might want to consider in your motion. There is no regrets.
Okay.
I'd like to just summarize, at our last meeting. We had members propose documents that should be considered after the date of April twenty twenty-three. We reviewed them again, we come together, we've. We've done thinking, we analyzed it, and we decided we've considered that we do not want to consider them for the. Is that a reasonable way of saying it?
Somebody makes a motion to support that?
Can I, can I make a statement before I vote?
Uh, well, be the second and then statement.
I second.
Thank you, Stewart, second.
All this stuff hangs on over here. These are very difficult decisions. I think. I think. That whatever this board decides. Proper, because. In time, we could.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm like, say something to, it seems to me that uh I didn't sign any documents. But two members of the board did, and now you reiterate your own decisions to to consider these documents? I mean, that's okay, let's put that on the record. Uh, I I didn't select any documents in the first place, but procedurally. We decided we would, and we would discuss them, and we would consider them, we haven't considered anything other than the fact that we're not going to consider them. That's where we're at right now, we we had a motion to consider them, and then we're now saying, well, we're going to remove that to not consider.
We have a motion for discussion, so those those documents came forward, I I brought those forward, but as you look at the states. And in further consideration of what the Supreme Court said, and Kingas said what we had to do. I I again went back to these documents and says, you know, we should not consider them. So that was what we decided to do, that we were going to bring them forward, we were going to discuss them, and then if in fact. You know, reading everything.
I missed the discussion.
We just had it.
No, I, I started in the panel, all of our group, not completely discussing.
I I understood the way Denise said, that we agreed that we would, that we would. We would deliberate whether we accepted them or not. And I remember that, the same, same as Denise does. We didn't, we didn't agree to accept them, we agreed.
We agreed to.
I guess I'm misunderstanding what deliberation is.
We agreed to consider them, that means I went home and I reread them. And put my thoughts into it and said, you know, why would I consider this for standing? And then I came back and we're discussing it, and I gave my reason why I don't want to consider them. And then she decided she didn't want to consider them. And I went to her.
I get it, but I don't get it, because we didn't consider the documents, we only considered, we're not, we've considered the documents.
Well, that's not true.
Yeah, well, I think it is, one is we have a discussion about any of the three.
To consider didn't mean that we had to have a discussion about the context of the documents. The consideration was, we all went home and we looked at these documents and we said, are the material, should we include them after the April twenty-four date? That's what I did, and that's why I opt out of consideration. Because I did consider them.
Okay, I guess my understanding was that we would have considered them as a group. In a back and forth, and then that Patrick would say something, and I would, or you would, or somebody else would say, that we would consider them in open form. Not that we would go all in, and just say, ah, forget it. If I'm wrong, okay, I get it, but that's not what I'm assuming.
I certainly, you know, we we can do what we think is best, we can consider each other separately, and. As Patrick voiced his. His concerns, and we can vote on Patrick's. Or we can, I presented, do we want to do it collectively, or do we want to do separate?
Could I suggest that, no. I think. That's been done. I think I stated my case on the three things, I wouldn't have anything different to say. We would go further with it, and three of the members have disagreed with it. Uh, I think what's important is we didn't reject all of this evidence out of hand. We we can, we submitted, the individual members submitted stuff that was important. We discussed it here today. And the vote was three to two. I I'm satisfied with that. And I think, I think it's easy to get confused about what we did the first time, Rex, I understand.
I'm not confused about it, I get what we're doing, I just disagree with it, we're having a discussion as to how we're going to vote on the motion on the floor. My discussion is that I disagree, and these are the reasons why. I took that question, we would discuss these individually, if we're not going to do that, okay, that's my obligation to bring that up to your attention. If you think I'm wrong, don't want to agree with that, it's leave it up to you. But I have to in good conscience present where I mean, what I thought we should do with it.
Absolutely, Rex, absolutely, your. Uh, your presentation, how you feel about it or did it afford part of it? We, some of us disagree.
And you want to, as part of this, so that you all are on the same page. There are two standards that you have to consider, are these documents material? And is there good reason for the delay in presenting them? After the original decisions were made by this board in, back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen? Those are the, those are the standards by which you need to judge the consideration of these documents. So your motions should, your motion, whichever way you want to go. About the consideration of these documents, should not be considered, say. Um, it's the position of this body that they're not material, or and or. Uh, there's good reason, there's no good reason for them to be considered, if you want to consider them, you said, well, they're material, and. There is good reason. So those are the standards that you have to use to consider. These documents or not considered. That's up to you guys.
I think we're done, I stated, I stated why I thought they were material, and why I thought there was good reason, and they disagreed. Um. I think your motion is clear, motion suggests clear.
So I just want to be clear on my understanding. Kind of strong, we've had a motion to accept the three. In total. That motion failed. The option available, is even still, is to accept or reject these individually, or to reject them. So that still needs to be decided on this. However, is he going to approach that?
My notes say that we did have a motion by Webster, supported by Stewart, to reject.
The three.
That's what we're discussing, are you correct?
Exactly, exactly right.
So the motion on the floor is that the three documents that we considered. Are. Not, that we considered them and rejected further consideration of these three documents.
Yeah, my notes say that because they are not material and not a good reason to have them, then we go with it.
Correct.
So one quick question. Are we stating for the record that they're not material and they're not? By voting um for this, we're saying that?
Correct. Correct.
So even though none of these documents. Has relevant good reason to be considered, now you're saying.
I don't remember that from a, since I was in the briefing, we would just put, at that meeting, I'm sure what it was. Uh, it was that we were just writing the documents, and we would look at those.
Correct.
That that's all along, it was just that we would get them, and it made our decision, then we would come back and say whether in fact they were in fact. Uh, material uh to standing, and uh they were not good reason, so that's what we're doing today. Is that those are the documents. That were uh, Patrick and I only brought it forward. We all, and we had all come back and look at those documents and said, and use the same thinking of what um. To standing and uh were not presented previously, and. As I looked at it, and I looked at the order, I'm like, well. There is not, that material was not um from standing, uh. Wouldn't be related to um standing, and wasn't, there wasn't any good reason, so that's why I'm saying. I I. I guess withdrawing that document, I think. Um, for us to even consider, I guess that's how I would say that. That that's the one document, I mean, it was just that one document that uh that was left, because the other ones were already submitted. That I had all, I brought forward, they were already part of the record. So that that was the only document that wasn't part of the record.
And just. Going back to the meeting, I believe you.
I get it.
You, me, and Kathy all said there are no other documents in that whole thing. That if. If we don't allow the all of them, we shouldn't limit it to this, I reviewed them, I think one document. I have a contrary position on that document, unless we include them all, I say no, but that's my position.
I agree.
So back to the vote. Unless it's for the discussion.
Would you repeat the motion again, or since you got there? My notes say the motion was made to reject three documents made by Denise Webster, supported by Patrick Stewart. That they were not material and not good reason, but not then presented previously.
And then to second to that motion, did you?
That was Stewart's march.
Okay, roll call, please.
Kerr. I am accepting that motion. Dritsas?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Falker?
No.
Stewart?
Just basically, so.
Motion carries through you. Now with the. With the minutes that we have left. I think we're in a position to say that next week we are hopefully. Pointing to time this matter of standing, and I wonder if the council want to take like a five-minute. Uh, just give us your best. One position is that we should think we should have standing, and um. We'll wrap it up in five seconds. Roll call.
Thank you, members, for your time, uh, and for the discussion. I think where we ended with that vote. Uh, is a good way to start discussion of standing. In that vote, you voted, at least three of you did, that these documents were not relevant. Material to the system. And. That is the case, if you recall, when this started, uh. We submitted a lot of documents, but at the same time, I also said. These aren't necessarily as relevant to standing. They're only necessary to respond to certain allegations. Right, and coastal alliance documents, and all the claims that they've brought, see, we put them on the screen before, if. If those are in, then we need to be able to rebut them and show you that they're not true, but simply uh speculation rather than actual. But if we simplify this, if we come back to the heart of the issue here. All those documents, like this board just determined, are not irrelevant. And we know that when we look at the decision. The approval, what was? Was it an approval that North Shore, of whether North Shores could build anything on the property? So is it an approval that determined whether there was a vacant land, or there were homes and boats? No. Property zone R two. North Shore has the absolute right to put homes there, to put docks there, to put boats there, and for there to be a thriving neighborhood there. That is beyond question, that can't be challenged. That cannot be the basis of claims and the harm that the coastal alliances. And it's. What has to be the basis for their harm, if they're going to have standing, it has to be the decision of the planning. And the only thing the planning commission approved. Was a different configuration. Not homes in this layout, but in this layout. Not boat slips in this configuration, but in this configuration. That's what was approved. You asked me to distill it down with the documents you need to look at, look at the zoning. What are we approved for, and what can we do under that zone? Second, look at the attorney's letters, township's attorneys, where they summarized what was being approved and what was not. You'll notice that they. Say very clearly that the construction of Oak Basin. Is not being approved, this is not a question of what the construction of the lagoon does or doesn't do. This is a question of the approval of the plan to develop. When you focus on the approval. You will see. That there is not any connection between that and all the alleged harms that the coastal alliances throw against. The other point I want to bring is. Simply. That this issue has already been decided multiple times by this board. By the circuit court. By a court appeals, every court. And zoning body that has considered this has determined that the coastal alliance does not have standing. Now, we know about the Supreme Court's decision, and you heard some interesting takes on the Supreme Court's decision today from the public.
One minute.
But what you heard was citations from the dissenting opinion. Citation from the dissenting opinion from the judge that was overruled by the other judges. What does the majority opinion of the Supreme Court say? And by majority opinion, I mean the binding opinion? They said this was a hardly a change, it was a clarification to the history of jurisprudence on this issue. That's all. Last time we were here, I gave you a handout of the decisions. That the zoning board of appeals had made before, and the circuit court had made, and in those decisions. I've highlighted where those bodies, including this body. Apply the correct standard already. So when the Supreme Court said.
Fine.
You guys, may I finish my thought?
Jeremy.
When the Supreme Court said, check the ruler that you've used to see if you've measured. In inches or in. When the Supreme Court said, check the ruler that you've used to see if you've measured in inches or in centimeters. You can look back at those decisions and say, we already measured in inches as the Supreme Court told us to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Howard?
Thank you. I'm gonna have Ms. Melk start.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Milliken on behalf of the coastal alliance. I regret I can't show you many slides because we've taken a turn and backed up, gone in a few different directions. But I have things on my screen that were prepared for the last meeting where I want to pick up with Sir Gabriel's comments to you about this being an approval of a configuration of homes and boats. That's a fundamental disagreement that I hope we do some serious consideration to because as I see it, he's not being honest. Consult the table of uses near zone ordinance. Whether that's the zoning ordinance that is currently in effect that I understand was adopted just a couple of months ago, or the table that was in effect back in 27, so in that section forty dash ten forty six. That table of uses as the line item for marinas. And under the R two category says special approval use. Make no mistake, North Shores in January twenty seventeen filed out an application form. Checked a box that said special approval use. It was described as a marina. Your attorneys in April twenty seventeen created a memo that talked about approving a special approval use for a private marina. The minutes of the meeting that approved that format that is contested in this case is riddled with references to marina. This is not about a configuration. This is about a marina. It is incorrect to say that the coastal alliance is opposed to all development on this property. In fact, the coastal alliance at its own expense has hired two, if not more, professional consulting consultants who have prepared alternatives that would configure boats differently in a river, propose different dock arrangements and also different residential developments that might, might occur within a critical duty area in a more thoughtful way that better preserves. So this is about marina and don't be fooled when they tell you about their effects. I'm gonna pass the mic here to Sir Howard. He's gonna talk a little bit about what the courts have told us about the Supreme Court standard in the last couple of years.
So to follow up on another thread that the North Shores discussed with you. How do we measure this? It's new standing test. And how significant of a difference is it from what existed before? And the answer is, it's very significantly different. And that's not just me telling you that as an advocate, that's coming straight from the courts that have reviewed the Supreme Court's decision in the time that since it has come down in palisade. First, the Supreme Court talks a bit about the Deer Lake Property Owners Association versus in that township case. And that, that case found that a group of lakefront property owners had standing to challenge seasonal docks and boats because the keyhole would increase boat traffic and create dangerous crowding and disrupt or destroy the shoreline as an ecosystem. Sounds just like the allegations that we have presented to you and through our standing affidavit, through Kathy Beely Wallace, the family, through with the recreational users and the folks that have a pecuniary interest in the safety of the river. That, that case was, our case was followed up by a case called Tuskele Tuskele Area Airport Authority versus Michigan, Michigan Aeronautics. And that was a case that dealt with how do we, how do we interpret this Sagitta opinion for the Supreme Court?
One minute.
Michigan Supreme Court reversed the Court of Appeals, holding that the airport authority had an alleging concrete, that alleged a concrete and particularized injury applying the coastal alliance case based on the potential pecuniary loss from the loss of pilots coming into the, into the, being used the airport. Finally, the Court of Appeals has issued two opinions, both of which said the Sagitta case and the Tuskele case that was just discussing. Both of those indicate that what the Supreme Court has done has reduced the bar for standing, has lowered the bar for standing to make it substantially easier to, to go back to what it was supposed to be designed for, which is that gatekeeping role, that gatekeeping function. Finally, Judge, the circuit court. Circuit court in this very case said essentially the same, essentially the same thing in, in the transcript of a hearing when we were, was, we were arguing with another court. The court indicated that this is a substantial change. We, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
I have copies of those cases. The numbers are careful. They're relatively short. Like they're long, but as a lawyer, basically.
Are there any others?
Yeah, you need to discuss another meeting date. Hopefully everybody can get that in the calendar.
Next one of the questions.
Yes.
How do we handle requests to discuss it? Corps of Engineers and Eagle's decision?
Those are permits. I don't think they're going to need to do it. They're returns. And it's one of the parts we did in accordance with seasonality. I don't think it's our purview. We can consider. Anybody disagree? Well?
Apparently disagree. I think, I think the Supreme Court in their discussions talked about back that court.
Take one for each. Three pounds. Probably from three, the same thing. Where some in the public?
Well, yeah. Let me, let me, let me.
Yeah.
Supreme Court in the deliberations talking about the fact of forever that the legislatures, state and federal, have responsibility for the well-being of the community. That's how the law has been done here. And there are signees. And then there are signees would be the Corps of Engineers, Eagle. The reason we're all sitting here is because the Corps of Engineers and Eagle have been in a role for years. And now they, they've stated their, their, their rulings to begin with. It is a ruling. It isn't, it isn't a, gee, we think this is okay. We think this isn't okay. Now we learn every argument. Yes, the, the coastal alliance, people have the right to challenge their rulings. I know it's a process which may take years. Point is, they made their determinations. Now people must challenge it. It's a normal legal process.
Yes.
And I don't think we should be required to ignore their rulings because they can be challenged. I know, I know you think that's a legal opinion and I'd like to hear other legal opinions about that. It may be right, but it just doesn't sound right. Listen, I think we have to, we have to eject some reasonableness in all of this. And we're blocked from considering the rulings of the agencies that were charged with making a rule. Were charged with, say, the planning commission did their approvals based on the E P, the Eagle here and the Corps, and the Corps of Engineers approving or disapproving. Now they've done it. I think that's too critical a factor to just ignore. And I'm not sure how we solve the problem of what a way to open something like that. I want to do what's right, but it just doesn't sound.
Any else, any? Thoughts?
I don't know if it's, uh, and also we can't turn ourselves illegal or the other authorities that made it sits based on things that are in their area of expertise. We're only here for the standing. I don't think that whatever Eagle decides to give them a permit or not give them a permit is not what we're challenging to consider. I think that's out of the mouth of course, and it's not up to us.
I wasn't, I wasn't saying that we should judge the ruling. What I'm saying is that in their, in their rulings, there are statements that affect the subject where we do have evidence to discuss. They, they substantiated or argued or did whatever, they went one way or the other. But they're the people who are charged to make the discussions. It's not important that we talk about whether we agree or disagree with their rulings. So the points they made, the evidence that they produced in doing that does have, I think, an effect on standing. It's material to standing.
Well, without knowledge for me, without knowledge of all of it, what do we have an existing decision? In their experience, it's been a long time coming. I'm not sure. How far back should we go and consider what they said? Like, you know, I don't get it. The longer you wait, more information they come to light, more, more studies, research. It's good for all those things. You know, Eagle didn't act quickly, you know? Is that because of a lawsuit? Is that the geography? I don't know. I don't know how to find out. I agree, Mark mentioned with what you're saying, but I just don't know how. So it's up to us to consider it because I don't think we know how they arrived at their decision process. What, what information are they? Are they using the information we're using from years ago or a fumble? You know, as newly developed.
Public information. They, they posted it as public information. They said, we, we, we just allow for this, 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 and this reason. And then, and then that can be challenged. It should be challenged.
My only comment about this and realizing those two letters, but those came in late. So that means in other words.
Words, sorry.
And Copia didn't see those letters because the judgment was in January. Those letters came in February and February and August. Or Sally Allen wrote, late, both of them came in February. So if I, if we are to our job is to look at the, what the judge said back in January, then we would not consider those letters. Then we'd have to go back to the judge and say, Judge, these can't, so now are you asking the Z B A to continue with standing? Or are you saying, no, we're done?
You made a decision to stop.
Yeah. So therefore, I, I, I understand. So I would go back to what, yeah.
And just as a point of clarification, this, you guys can have this discussion. I think the idea here was to get started on the concept of getting a final ruling of standing. And you're touching on some of the issues that would get into that discussion that by planning with, with the zoning administrator in our office, we were thinking that would transition to the next meeting, which our plan was to consider that next meeting date, hopefully next week at this time, that kind of thing. So that you can, you know, throw these things out on the table and say, okay, I think there should be standing because, or I don't think there should be standing because, and that's the time. And it's nothing wrong with discussing it now, except for we're the zoning administrator in our office, we're thinking that you want to do that.
The discussion is whether we consider.
Yeah, exactly.
Not what.
I hear you.
And I think it's really important to have these discussions.
Exactly.
For the record.
Exactly.
This is going to be challenged. I mean, we just started making, and without deliberation, decisions on any of these things. I think we can, I think this is.
I, it's a good head start to getting people thinking about what's going on, for sure.
There's more public commentary.
No, public comment.
There's a library of public.
No, no. Back to work.
There's another public comment. On the agenda. There's another public entry, public comment section.
Pardon me.
Thank you. I'm the, I'm the attorney, sir. Being a lawyer, I've been to a lot of hearings, being such dismissal, finding of facts, irrational documents that should be included. I, one Z B A member saying the judge prohibited considering comments. Well, last week I was here and I showed you the judge's order and said, documents received after can be examined, given away by the C B A. That was in his, I don't know what you read, but you did what you're doing. I'm really puzzled that you're not getting into the guts of this thing Rex was talking about. You need to digest, find some facts, learn what's the law say. Even then, you haven't, I've been doing lots of, you haven't done fact finding and like facts off. The majority justice didn't hand. The other thing, that was fairly clear and saying that when the, when the judge sent, they're saying they don't like what the Supreme Court did, and they do the reason. Saying judge is, we're ensuring that you can open this standing issue up to anybody that walks in the door. And basically, that's what they did. They can show any degree of difference as to the concerns and the issues. So you guys are gonna go back to the judge, he's gonna, he's gonna look at this. And he's gonna say, what are you doing? What are you doing? You gotta follow the law. You gotta have your facts, determination of facts. You built the rationale, why you decided what you did on all these documents. Can't just come in the meeting and say, well, I looked at it at home last night and I didn't go into these. There should have been a master list for all these evidence you've done. And then you'd gone through them one by one, which the sentence says, we were there, you know, more about, you haven't done any of that. The judge is a good, thank you, opportunity to come.
You know, thank you for your concern. We're a humble body of citizens trying to do the best we can. We appreciate your input. I think we're giving consideration. We have a legal counsel to assist us and make difference from your position. But humbly, I say we're doing the best we can. Yeah. Go ahead, Ken.
I can fairly say that every person on this board has read, excuse me.
Oh, it's bleeding, so we can't.
Every person on this board has read all of those presented, multiple times. I personally picked up from the first thing we looked at was Supreme Court's. Things he's talking about just trudled over yesterday, we've known from the beginning. I just disagree with this assessment completely. I respect that what the board has done, but look at all of this evidence.
Thank you. Yes.
I respond now on the same topic that Mark.
I can't really hear you.
Oh, okay. Put it up. Are you getting?
No.
Okay. I respond with almost two. I think what we're talking about there with Dale was talking about is transparency. How the process has gone. If someone's reading something at home and has considered it, I think all of that, I totally agree, needs to be discussed here, document by document. And that's how I understood it was going to be done. And that would be through transparency. And that would be through transparency. We're not saying that you all haven't read them or whatever, but I think the public that are sitting back here can't follow, can't follow what's been read. It's not been read which documents you're probably talking about. And if you're confused as well on some of what your decisions were, then you certainly have your minutes to revert it. So it's very amusing and the public does want transparency. Thank you.
I just, if I may briefly respond by saying I think that the opinion, at least three of us, believed in excluding all documents, not for any particular merit other than that they were submitted after equal point four. So I don't know if that is transparency because we weren't evaluating individual documents. It's a generalized statement of excluding additional documents. I don't know if that answers your question.
You may know these notebooks up here.
But...
Regularly, 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 the parties in this case who come in and everyone, these notebooks full. And another action, somewhere we have to eliminate the continuing evidence being brought in to make a side, make a decision based on what you have. This can go on forever. If you don't, you have to draw the line somewhere and consider the information you have and the decision, and just keep on going for it. And that's what we decided to do as a board. I think we were transparent in doing it. We had several meetings discussing. Sorry if you don't, thanks, open. Thank you. Quite.
Just wanted to make sure that some I have not attended all of your prep.
Yes.
My name is Marshall Curry. I live in sixty-two forty-eight Blue Star Highway. And I also served on the ZBA Lakefront Township as well as many conditions, which I remember some time. I also was a witness to the law that really is at the basis for all of what's going on in the past eighteen, fifteen years with disputes on this property. I just wanted to say that insofar as I have a very long-term perspective about this. I know exactly how you feel in these chairs. And I just wanted to sort of make a comment that the proceedings, which have been frustrating, I believe, for everyone, as far as everyone is hoping to get closer to clarification, to make a clear decision and the right decision to move forward, and yet there's been obfuscation here. Now, the procedures are confused. And frankly, you know, I don't think it's the fault of the board first. I think that if one has to look for why things seem to have been gone astray a little bit in the proceedings, that have more to do with, it's very complicated, big thing that, you know, hasn't been out before. But your legal counsel has not given you the kind of counsel that would help you necessarily through this, just in terms of statements. The motions were put together by the attorneys and they were confusing to him. And that's something that any of us know how to kind of put together a clear motion that gets legal and that's all stuff. But my basic statement that I wrote down so I could do it very, very quickly was, I just want to say, you know, the township and its signees who we serve on one of these boards, we are charged to guard the public trust and the rule of law.
One minute.
But when they fail in the duty provided by their own laws, the public, we the people, have both the right and, I feel the responsibility to challenge those bad decisions. I know what the people who wrote the law about the lake shore and the public frontage said in all of their deliberations. I was at the meetings. I heard them, and I know they wanted to be absolute that this was the one place where there was no exception. I know that. When the township makes a mistake, when any municipality makes a mistake, there has to be a way to correct it. And it's a betrayal, you know, of the public trust. The Supreme Court, Court's ruling about standing supports this. There has to always be a way to make a mistake and...
Time.
And so I have to just think.
Any other comments? The next meeting we have, I have on my schedule is for next Thursday, July eighteenth at four o'clock.
That's a couple of days. Our council, it's not available. It's Thursday, but I'm aware of.
Neither Ms. Melik and I would most have this Thursday, the...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. But we are, I am available next, the following Thursday.
What, the service?
July twenty-third.
Correct.
We have another application that will be here, you know, the twenty-fifth. So it's not very fair to that applicant to have followed this, so I would say...
But that would be new business, right?
We would do the application first because that's new business.
Correct?
I think new business.
I'd rather not. It's not related to this, but it, there could be misinterpretations for that. So I would rather not do that. I will do it if that's what the board wants, but...
Well, why don't we, you know, we'll do what we can to accommodate schedules. We may consider other dates to accommodate counsel. We don't want to get into a discussion on the record here of what dates we're going to be moving to. We thought we would discuss it, and hopefully everybody would be here. We know now that they can't, so we'll have to look at alternative dates. Is that, that is what would be my recommendation, no sense of carrying on the record any longer than this.
The only thing that we're firm about is that we're not meeting until July eighteen.
Apparently, that's the case. So a motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
So, okay, I do adjourn this for a second.
Second.
I'll compare.
Right.